I'm gonna call our regular meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It's June 20th. First item is set adjusted agenda. I have one thing.
Okay.
I'd like to add an executive session to discuss contracts, the premature disclosure of which would put the town at a competitive disadvantage.
Wow. I like that.
That's one of the reasons.
I have our collective bargaining agreement with the police department. We received correspondence from the local late this afternoon about contract. They submitted the corrections we requested, but you can vote if you want. If we can keep it on the agenda, you can vote to ratify it and I can authorize me to sign it when the corrections are made or we can push it to the July, the July meeting.
What's your, your call? We go long.
That's on the agenda.
I know.
Yeah, let's just shift it because we don't want to put you, just because we don't want to put you in a position without us seeing it.
We didn't put it in because we didn't make a correspondence until like four o'clock.
So let's push that one on.
But we don't want, even though we trust you, we don't want to put you in a position where you size something we don't see.
Which we're, which, where is it?
Yeah.
It's not on here.
Item six. Oh, there it is.
Okay. Anything else?
Can you hear that?
So we're gonna delete item six and we're gonna add an executive session. Uh, the, the, right. Kay was asking for the statute reference for the executive session. It's 313 something.
Subsection one, two, or three. Pick one.
Well, it's the one about contracts.
Maybe we can.
I don't have my phone. My kids have it.
Paul says one will cover us.
One will cover us. All right. So could I have a motion to?
Motion to mayor approve amended agenda.
Excellent.
Second?
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's everybody. So motion carries. Communication from the audience. Anybody here to communicate anything that's not on our agenda tonight? Tracy, did you state your name?
Yes, I'm Tracy Martin. I'm your community development coordinator and I have some tiny pieces of good news to share for fun. So I thought you'd see some. We have, we have to, happy to report that the Hardwick Downtown Partnership received a grant, a tree planting grant that we've been chasing. It's a grant worth thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. They're gonna be working in collaboration with the Conservation Commission and my office and.
Jeff.
And Jeff, our tree warden, to do tree planting around the downtown. This is from the partnership of A and R, the Urban and Community Forestry Program and Chittenden County RPC.
So, good job. But please don't plant them so close to the road like they are in Chittenden County. Because you cannot drive there, plant them every day in Chittenden County on new streets, in new villages. They're building South Perlington and you can't drive down the street. You can't meet, vehicles can't meet because the trees are in the road. They're beautiful.
To speak to that concern, part of our, what was special about this particular grant proposal is that we are doing an adopt a tree program. So people who live along the streets, adopt a tree, so it's out of, right of way, but yet might still shade the blocking side of the area. So, yeah.
All right.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other communication from the audience? Paul, can you state your name?
Paul Fix, Hardwick. I have two things. One, I have resigned as chair of the board of Northeast Kingdom Broadband.
Go.
I remain on the executive committee. I remain your rep until otherwise decided, which really means I'll be able to give Hardwick more attention because I don't have that broader picture, which is probably good. Any question, I'd be happy to talk to you about that. But the most important reason I'm here is to introduce Ramonda Parchment. Ramonda is an intern at the Hardwick Gazette with, where I am editor. She will be covering the Hardwick Select Board meetings for the foreseeable future. And she is a.
It's a long time.
She's a student, she's a student at Castleton, but she's living here in Hardwick with her grandmother and going to be finishing her degree this summer and fall at Johnson State. So for the next while, assuming she continues to like what she's doing, she'll help us share what you're doing with the town.
Welcome, Ramonda.
So you're actually gonna come to the meetings?
Yes.
Nice. Appreciate it. I really do.
And I hope she's got a tough skin because I'm leaving and she's on her own. Thanks. Do you have any questions? I mean, you can run and answer those.
I'll catch you outside.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, at some point it'd be nice to get an update on the build. It doesn't have to be tonight.
Oh, we're having a meeting this Saturday in Danville with the whole board and I'll come away from that.
Awesome. Certainly be next month.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
Point of order, it's 313 subsection one, subsection A, 1A, contact.
Got it. Thank you.
But Paul said we covered three.
Got it.
Just wanted to.
Great. Thank you. Any other communication? Yes?
Hi, my name's Scott Duck. I'm from St. Johnsbury and I'm just up here to listen and learn to Hardwick. I'm running for senate for Calvary District, which includes Hardwick. I'm a five-term state representative and my wife and I own the bookstore in St. Johnsbury. I'm not sure if you've ever been there or not, but I'm just, I think it's my third trip up to Hardwick and I'm just here to listen and see what's going on here.
You're currently representative?
Currently am representative. I'm in St. Johnsbury, Concord, and Kirby right now.
Good. Glad you're here.
Welcome.
Good luck.
Anybody else? All right. Moving forward, next is approving minutes from last time, which was June the sixth.
Motion to approve the minutes from the June sixth meeting.
Second.
That's something, but it was very minor. So any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Motion carries. Thank you. Next town manager report, Mr. Upset.
All right, we kept it short today. So we'll start with the wastewater plant upgrade, update. So the underground storage tank has been removed and site work has been completed for the regrade paving in front of the building. We're still waiting for the subcontractors to show up and put the cover for the anaerobic reactor cell. But other than that install, that project is wrapping up.
Wow, great.
The Negliant Chase project is wrapping up. Kristen Lady and I met last Monday with Al Rich and Elliot, Guide House Consulting, which is the state's consultant for FEMA work and the state of Vermont Water Investment Division personnel to go over the first draft of scoping and feasibility study of the wastewater treatment facility rebuild or replace project. What?
So this is a new, Negliant Chase is wrapping up. That was a project that was a pre-flood and now we're, this is a new looking forward, making more flood resilient.
This, this is the, this is the first step in deciding how we're gonna address the, how we're gonna mitigate moving forward. Go ahead.
No, I'm just trying to think of, so I know how we had, FEMA had emergency and then you have fit. So it's up and running now. Everything's good now. Everything's been replaced. The needs were replaced that was caught by the flood. It's functional, let's say.
Yes.
I mean, obviously, I'm sure there's a few things that we would do, especially if we're gonna redesign it.
Correct. Yep.
So that's where we're at. So everything that has been done related to the flood, so today was covered under the emergency or whatever the title is.
Yep.
What we're talking about here is, is to, to, to make it better.
It's still FEMA work.
Right, but it's different. It's a different, whole different.
It's to make it so.
So it won't happen again.
Bring it up to codes and standards.
Codes and standards.
The current flood claim.
Okay, so flood, flood codes and standards.
Yes.
I'm just trying to get, the point I'm trying to get is our plan is back to functioning at a hundred percent. May not be perfectly ready and everything is very, but it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Yep.
As it's supposed to do it.
Correct. We're, we're up and running.
That's good. That's a good place to be.
So they have, they provided us with three options, which are rebuild the facility that option one.
The entire?
No, just re, re, rehab, bring it up to codes and standards. Basically put the controls, the controls, the process on the roof.
Yeah, that the lagoons basically stay.
Just the process stays the same. The control building is just elevated.
Yep.
The other one is to level that building and rebuild it. And the difference is between that is, one is wet floodproofing and the other is dry floodproofing. And then the third option is to rebuild a facility.
Elsewhere.
That is not the lagoon process, but rebuild the facility in the lagoon and put in a sequential battery reactor in the lagoon. So completely new process.
Same area, different process.
Different process.
Same real estate.
And that would be built up inside the lagoon with concrete tanks and so, so on and so forth.
High drive.
And those are kind of the progressive price.
And they're all priced.
But, you know, they'll start out, the wet proof, it means it's gonna get wet stuff.
Yes.
But not be ruined. Dry means.
That's, that's the debate. I'm pushing for.
No, it's not a good plan.
Dry floodproofing.
Yeah. Dry floodproofing means it stays dry.
Yep.
And then relocation obviously is gonna be the big one.
So once we determine what draft we will proceed with, so we have to put something forward to FEMA and FEMA either says, no, this isn't gonna work, or yes, we can do this. And then the funding package starts to get put together.
So who decides which?
We all collectively decide what.
We as a select board, the state.
The town, the state, federal government. Yeah. This is a big project.
Because we ultimately, regardless, are gonna have some match in this.
I'm hoping it's gonna be minimal.
But, I mean, we gotta be realistic with it.
I have said.
Solid left is gonna be ours.
I had, I've said from the beginning that we cannot put the burden on our eight hundred repairs.
Right. No, I agree. Hundred percent.
But I think also, from talking to you, it seems like your eyes have also been on the, that whatever we end up with is something we're gonna own likely for the next forty, fifty years.
Right.
So how, what is the cost of operating and maintaining that?
Right. And for example, an SBR facility, sequential, sequential battery reactor facility is an energy, sorry.
Energy intensive.
Energy intensive facility. So the cost of operation is gonna go. So the lagoons right now are the best, the cheapest.
Cheapest, simplest.
The most cost-effective way of tree wastewater.
Even with all our, our sludge.
So dry, dry flood is a good option for us. I mean, not say we're gonna do that now, but it's a really good option.
Well, that's what we're pushing for. Because we don't wanna, we would, so our, to get into the weeds, so our influent pumps would be dry, submersible pumps. So they can be wet and still pump. Where in the past, we're twenty-seven feet below the base flood, the base flood elevation. The basement, the headworks of the plant fills up with water and those pumps are the first thing to go out and that's what pumps our wastewater in the lagoon.
Lagoon.
That's a very essential part of our process.
Right. Because once it's in the lagoons, chances are it's gonna be safe.
Our lagoons are.
They did not flood.
They're not flooded.
They did not flood.
No, they will not.
They weren't compromised.
No, not at all. And they're, they're fresh and they're now. So. Cool. That's a good job. Good work.
So I can skip the rest of my paragraph on that because we just went over it in detail. We have sent back the draft, the town, my office has sent back the draft proposals, request for proposals with comments to NBDA for procurement of a consultant for the scoping and feasibility study for the development of Creamery Road, which includes relocating the fire department, town garage, and working hard for rescue to locate a new facility on the property. This consulting will be paid for by the Municipal Technical Assistance Program, MTAP. So we're just flugging away on that. Hopefully, the ball is in NBDA's court, so hopefully they can pick that up and run with it.
So basically, this is just getting a request for proposal out there.
For an engineer.
For him to, to design a plan.
Complex.
Yep.
Is there any news in, I mean, I know this, but they had applied for a congressional grant. Is there any news about that?
Yeah, it's been submitted. There's several processes. I think probably August or September. I know they send their list forward in October. So we should hear something. Watershed Protection Flood Prevention Operations Program. This is another mouthful sponsored by the NRCF, which is the Natural Resource Conservation Service, federal government. Would be willing to do a preliminary investigations report, which can take up to twelve months to complete on the Cooper Brook River corridor in the village. So the Lemoyle gets a ton of attention, but we had some major flooding problems to call on the Cooper Brook.
Sure did.
And that in town gets overlooked sometimes. So we want, really basically what we need is we need to submit a letter to the NRCF requesting their assistance for the project. The initial phase of the project has no financial obligation on our part and it's, there are several phases that are covered. It's just the last phase, which is years down the road of construction and implementation where there might be a match. But they would come in and look at that area and give us guide, guidance somehow to plan and develop that area of town. So.
I think that could be really helpful to get that all rolling because, I mean, yeah, the one thing I feel I've learned on this board is you can't really move forward with any sizable project without all your planning done.
Right. Yeah. And this, I mean, we're looking at twenty-five, thirty, forty years down the road for the development of the town and the village. And that's an area that we will definitely be expanding.
It'll need to. It will need to. Even though it's got flood issues, it's gonna be the area to do it.
Also, something about the confluence of Cooper Brook and the Lemoyle River right there is a real, is they combine into a little.
Who cleaned out the, the debt to state on Route fourteen? How can we do that?
Sort of our responsibility now because they put in that retention.
Cause I asked about responsibility that.
We, we switch. They do it sometimes. We do it sometimes.
It used to be off and on.
No, I'm just, I was curious as to.
Yes. Yeah, we did that same time. Kim came up, Trail Park and clean that up too at the same time.
Yeah. We gotta do the other side of the map. I was running down the road. Maybe I'll do that.
Did you want a motion to have Opie write a letter to the?
Write a, yeah, so would you, would you be okay if I request their assistance unofficially?
So I can, I can, so you do want a motion?
Sure.
So I'll make the motion that we have asked town manager to write a letter requesting assistance with the project to NRCF.
Watershed Protection Flood Prevention Operations Program.
That.
That's what she said.
It's an acronym.
Yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
On a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sorry, everyone. Motion carries. Thank you.
Fourth bullet down, the pedestrian bridge update. The project received two bids, which were open last Friday. The two bidders were CCS and JPC Card. CCS is out of Mooresville, JPC Card's out of Barton. CCS bid was rejected due to incomplete information requested in the beta package. Their first bid was two point eight million and their revised bid came just over three point five million. JPC Card's bid came in at two, four point two million. The bids broke out the bridge and the retaining wall as two separate amounts, which is required if we are planning on getting reimbursement from FEMA to rebuild the wall. It's my understanding, as well as the project team, to include, to include the contractors looking at the project, that this work must be done concurrently due to the site limitations. We have a meeting with USDA on Monday to discuss the next steps. I have the bids here with me. If you wanna discuss, we can go over the breakout. But JPC Card, their bridge project bid number was one point seven and CCS, their, their bridge breakout, which is an incomplete bid, so we can't even consider it, was nine hundred thousand. So it still gives us a shortfall for that project of about four hundred thousand.
About what?
If, if that low bid was taken at nine hundred thousand.
Yep.
It would give us a shortfall of that project for about four hundred thousand dollars for the bridge.
And then there's gonna, if we choose to do the FEMA side of it, there's gonna be a match to that.
There's.
So that includes the.
That, that should be covered at nine, ninety percent. So the, that includes the match. That four hundred thousand.
For the bridge or for the whole project?
For the whole project.
Bridge and law?
Yeah. If you took that lowest bid.
Which we can't.
Which we can't.
Which we can't because it wasn't.
Yeah, good. I'll figure that one out.
So the plan, the plan is, what I'm gonna request from USDA is we do a shortened rebid, fifteen day rebid, and really pound the pavement, looking for contractors and try to get some more bids. So.
I don't think we're, I, that's fine. That's great for next step. But so the reality is I don't see us getting a bid of four hundred thousand dollars last. So where does that shortfall money come from?
So.
I'm not looking at you. I'm looking at you guys.
So I think, I mean, if, my, my feeling is if we had a bid where we only had a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall, to me, that seems surmountable, given the support we've had from various funders for this project already. So I think our first step would be to go to those funders and say, look, we, we're gonna need a little more and this is why. Here's a bid. We could take it and we'd do the project. Right? Like, we could do that. But the, what we need is, we need a bid that's in that range, that within, within.
Striking distance of what we have.
That is actually responsive bid, that's responsive to what we requested.
Did CCS not, didn't you ask, didn't you tell me, did you ask CCS to break it down and they chose not to do that?
They did.
They broke it down.
They broke it down and raised the price.
Right. And did they give you a reason for that?
Yeah, they said it was in their original, their bid, but it wasn't.
We can't, we can't make the math work and understand how that was in the original bid.
No, because that was what, seven hundred thousand or something, right? It was a two point eight, two point five, seven.
Two point eight to three point five.
You're gonna just leave seven hundred thousand dollars on the table and not know where it was.
Right.
Right.
Oh, Jesus, yeah. Zeros in the wrong place.
You can, I got the two bids here.
Yeah, no, I don't see that. So I'm more concerned about the legitimacy or the likelihood that we're gonna be able to find another contractor that's even gonna be. Because the first thing they're gonna do is read the story and say, I ain't going for, you know, I ain't going for less than that. I wouldn't unless I, nobody's that hungry right now, I don't think. There's still, there's a lot of work out there right now, so.
Yeah.
Next summer, there'll be a lot, a lot more people looking for work.
What's the, what's the ideal timing where it's out of?
It's definitely next summer now.
So.
It's June.
One of the contractors has been engaged with the bridge manufacturer and they, they say that if they order the bridge in the next couple of weeks, they could get it here by November.
Is that CCA? So we don't talk about CCS anymore because it's not a viable bid. So let it out. We have one bid.
Yeah.
And it's four point five, four point two.
We can't accept one bid. USDA will definitely tell us.
All right. So we have to receive other bids?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's bridges, that's what we need to do next.
They need to sharpen their pencil. Okay.
Yeah.
We just need to try again.
We gotta keep moving forward.
I got two more, I got two more. Carry on bullets.
I thought it was short tonight.
Yeah. I have, I have one more property to be considered for a buyout. This property is located on the corner of Wilkes Street. It's on Melane. Properties on both sides are already being considered. So that's.
We don't consider.
What was brought to me.
No, we don't, we're not considering it. FEMA or the state is.
They would, they will. It's just whether or not we're willing to start the process with this, this last property. I've, I've been told it's the last property that I'm gonna be at.
Isn't the deadline?
No, we're still, we're still.
Well, I don't think we say.
This isn't the state person mitigation grant.
I don't think anyone say no to anybody, anybody that wants to do it. And we said yes to others, right?
Yep, we can say no.
Specifics are one of these signs. It would be wrong.
Okay, good. And then last Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, Hardwick will be hosting the BCDP conference at the Townhouse.
Next Tuesday.
Vermont Community Development. Tuesday, June twenty-fifth.
Who's the last Tuesday?
Oh, this is the last thing.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. At the Townhouse, there will be approximately one hundred and fifty people in attendance. There won't be any parking problems because we have it under control. So if you see a large group of people walking around town, please welcome them to Hardwick. Thank you. That's it for me.
Great.
You should tell some kids to put up a lemonade stand and then.
Yeah, there you go.
Horse gray paint is on.
Oh, my gosh. Hey, sir.
Is that enough?
That's good. Thank you, thank you.
I got more.
Well, that's quite a bit.
Carry on.
All right. Well, if we're gonna carry on, we're moving to Tom Fadden for the road foreman report.
He got nothing. He took it all the time.
I didn't mention anything about the road. I didn't mention anything about the road.
Well, he hasn't been doing nothing on the roads. We ain't got enough guys.
Why not?
Huh?
Why not?
Everybody's on vacation.
Okay.
You know, that, that time of year where everybody uses up their time instead of losing it.
But I seen trucks running around to say, oh, you're a cop.
Yeah, there's two or three of us every down end, so.
All right. What are you doing?
Well, anyways, we were all caught up on grading. We were, until the rain. So, but they seem held, held up pretty good so, so far anyways. I know we got a little bit of wash over the part of the farm's way, but I figured with the downports coming today, it weren't worth going over there and grading and fixing it and then having, having by the farm there washed out again. So. We already mentioned the ditch work we did down on South, South, South Main. We've been hauling material back to the shop, some stay mats, so we can get ready to cover up some of the roads there that we need to resurface that we already have stay mat on. Oh, what else? We're getting ready to do sand, hopefully here pretty, pretty soon. Opie's supposed to meet with Kenny there next week about his screener. Crushing machine should be coming in towards the end of July.
Ooh, whoa, 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 back up.
Which one?
We're gonna screen out the sand?
No, we're not gonna do it.
We're gonna see if Kenny, Kenny said he has a guy.
Kenny's gonna supply guy.
Is that okay?
Yep. We don't have enough guys to do the work we have. Don't be taking on no more guys.
No, we're, we're, Kenny's gonna supply guy and a machine to do the screening. It's fine.
Yeah, yeah. We're pretty well stretched right now anyways.
That's right. Exactly.
So hopefully Monday, weather permitting, we're gonna start on the sidewalks, digging those up. This side, our side.
Why didn't we put that out to bid?
So.
These guys, these are the sidewalk guys.
Yeah.
We, we ended up asking and there was no way because they were, we, the way it was gonna be put out, Danny, was that we were still gonna have to dig it up and prep it and we're gonna have someone just come in for it. That's all we had the money for. By us doing it, we could actually do both sides of the streets ourselves. So, I mean, it's like last year, we, I think it took us, what, two and a half months, I think, to do that side over there. I mean, it weren't an everyday process. You know, taking us away from the other stuff we need to do.
So I got, so I can fill in work?
Yeah, it, it more or less is because if anything, the concrete trucks, they usually show up here by six thirty in the morning. And then there's your, only usually after we get it all ported and done, there's only two of us sitting there. Then the rest of the guys take off and then go, go, go back on the roads and work. So. But that's the only way that we can get it done because I think we got, what, maybe thirty thousand left? Something like that. And at the time, they were gonna charge us like three hundred dollars a yard just to pour it in place. So.
And that was with you doing all the prep and everything?
Yeah.
All right, carry on. I don't want, Danny's all disappointed now.
I just, it's sick of banging my head against the wall with you people. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, please.
So before the record.
Before the record.
You would prefer those types of.
I prefer it to highway maintenance department with highway maintenance and capital improvements were done by contractors that are special within the trade. Not that they can't do a good job. That's not their job. Their job is not concrete. Their job is not to do sidewalk work. And their job, there's plenty of things that are not getting done under the highway maintenance job description. Take anyone in this room for a busload ride around town and show them overgrown everything, ditches that are not working. You know, there's just the list. There's infrastructure. It is always something to do and, and it's no different than having the town manager be the grant administrator and, and project manager on these grants. We don't have, we're too thin in our people. We've added dozens of, of projects in the last two years and literally no staff to speak of doing the actual physical work. So that's my point. Thank you for, thank you.
Well, I probably shouldn't tell you that. We're gonna be mowing on the week of the eighth then.
That's good. The eighth of, the eighth of July, August, September, November?
No, no, no.
Two tractors.
We've got two tractors just for the week. That's it.
Yeah, but there's others. You know, there's others.
There's, there's thousands of.
I don't wanna argue with anyone.
Well, no, let me just, so this grant, this sidewalk grant was from. Well, no, let me just, so this grant, this sidewalk grant was from twenty twenty one. That was extended because the work didn't get done.
True.
And then it got extended again because of the flood and we could've gotten it done last.
You're kinda making my point.
So.
Thank you.
Great, so, I am more than happy, and I know Tom would be more than happy, that we kick this grant back, the twenty-three thousand dollars, because it's. A drop in the bucket for what we have to do.
Right.
And if we put this bid out for, for people to work, the people in the trades, the professionals to do the sidewalk, we get a hundred feet done. So, I'm all for saying to the state that we can't spend this twenty-three thousand dollars on the sidewalk, because we could definitely do more projects. That are way more effective than that sidewalk, I'm for that, if you tell me to do that, I will gladly tell the state they can have their twenty-three thousand dollars back. I'm happy to do that, if you want.
Clearly didn't communicate very well my point, because that is not what I'd asked, or mentioned.
Well, we can allocate.
So, no, just move on, please.
It is aligned with what you mentioned.
It is, I didn't say, I didn't say throw the grant back, I said start executing these things.
Different.
When the, differently, right, when the grant was forty something.
I agree with you.
Well, then.
The grant was too small for the job.
But we should've just still found a contractor and spent that money that year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Right, yes.
Correct, correct.
Danny, we tried.
Okay.
We did not get anybody to do it. Because when we were doing the sidewalks on the other side, Greens, Greensboro, like, or stopped and saw us doing it, thought we were contractors, wanted to know if we could go to Greensboro afterwards to do theirs. Because they actually went out to bid and no one bided on, on, on the sidewalk sidewalks up there for replacement.
No, but it is, like, I think.
I agree with you, absolutely.
The good question is if it's worth the twenty-two thousand dollars or not, does it?
Right, is it worth, well, or more to the point, is it worth, is that how we want our road crew spending that, that time this summer? Working on that sidewalk? Cause the benefit to us.
Right.
Like, we're not actually getting that much subsidy.
So, we also have about sixty thousand dollars in grant and aid work, that's rebuilding our roads that aren't up to code.
Yeah.
That we need, that they extended from last year to this year, so we have two years of grant and aid work that we have to spend before September. So, I'm more than happy, I have a meeting with them next Wednesday, and I'm more than happy to have contractors do that work. You just gotta let me know, we can, the, I think the thought in the, in the past has been, we get this, we get a grant. And we stretch it as far as we can stretch it and get as much work that we can get done, but what I'm hearing from you is that we need to. Really prioritize these projects and these small grants, we can't be using up our guys on, on the work.
Cause I know right now for ditch work, we're still, we're still trying to get caught up on the flood work for reshaping all of our ditches. Which, like I told Opie, it's, it's just that this grant and aid stuff is made for designated areas that are highlighted in red. So, it doesn't help us out trying to repair the ditches that we need to get back.
But that's what we're gonna talk about.
Right, that's what we're gonna talk about on Wednesday, if we can use that money for the ditch work that we are doing now, to help us fix and repair all the flood work and stuff still. Cause we still got, you know, tons of ditching to do, but then again, we only got so much money for ditch stone.
Right.
Where the grant aid wouldn't cover it because it's not considered a new project. Or it's not considered being in the red if it was in the green before, like Opie said, now it's in the red, but it was green and that's the way it is on their map. It's.
So, it's just a practical question about, because I don't know much about the sidewalk, is it a hazard to anybody walking it right now, a major?
Well, I, I mean, basically, a lot of our sidewalks in town need rehabbing.
Sure.
I mean, we got the entire north or south, South Main sidewalk going all the way down to Magnum.
Yeah.
That's in bad shape, and we got Wolf Street, that's in bad shape, we got this, I, I mean.
West Church.
The planning commission's done a lot of it.
By the time you start doing this stuff, you're, you're, you're gonna have to bond for, or else you're gonna have to start saving up a lot more money than.
Sidewalk, but it's not at the East Hard, Hardwick sidewalk level yet, basically, it's safe for somebody to walk on.
Yes.
Relatively.
And, and the street is new.
Right, so somebody doesn't have to walk in the street to avoid a hole or to avoid a crack, so it sounds like, God forbid we have a flood July. But I prefer that we spend time on ditches than a sidewalk, it just seems like, so this used to happen in my field too, is you get a grant. You do everything you can to get every penny out of that grant, and sometimes it's just not worth it, like, I don't know, I think it's a really good point, Danny, and I, I. I don't know if that's our number one, I think sidewalks are a priority, I don't know enough about that, I wouldn't say if it's a priority, but it just seems like. There's a lot more that you guys should need to be doing and spending time on.
I agree, a hundred percent. But it's, you know, it's what you guys wanna do, like, I am. I'm sick of living by the state standards, I'd rather do what the local community wants us to do. And I don't get a lot of phone calls saying you need to repair the sidewalks on Church Street.
So, maybe it's not the highest priority for this summer.
So.
Well, if you don't use it.
Does it have to be Church Street?
The grant was written for BDA accessible sidewalks on both sides of Church Street. Here, and one side has been done, brought up to code, and that was the worst side.
So, the entrance to this place could use a little while.
If, that's the plan, yeah.
So, I, use a twenty-three to.
Hire somebody to clean up this.
At least get handicap access to this end of the street to start with, and not, I don't know, that's what, I would.
Like the crosswalk.
Hire a contractor, yeah, and, and fix what we can for the money we have at the beginning of the street, to as far as it goes.
Okay.
That's, that, not sending it back.
Got it.
And just seeing what we can get, I mean, there's, there's people beyond, I mean, I've seen. Concrete being poured every day, all over the state, so.
Right.
There's big contractors that will get here at some point, by a lender, you know, there's somebody that'll do it, I guarantee you.
We will put it out on the street.
Well, that's my hope, that someone will do it, but.
Yeah, that.
Something happens.
I mean, there's people that do it every day, that have to have, they have to have curb, I mean, once the board is over, you gotta move on to the next one.
I did have a, I did have a conversation with a couple of labs two years ago, and they said it's not big enough for us to even look at.
Well, and, and I guess I'll have to, I'll take twenty-five grand, do three feet.
Yeah, I'll put it in a bid, we'll put it out in a week, so.
Linear feet, three linear feet, I would say try to spend the money, at least, if we're not.
Try to spend the money, but not have our town guys do it. Fair?
Yeah, I think.
Is that that?
Whatever.
Whatever?
We're good with it.
Look, we've done so much for this town and stuff like that, that you guys have asked us to do with time and time again, stuff that isn't involved with the town, town roads or anything else like that. This is the way the town has always been, because it's small.
Yeah.
And the stretching money, like you said, we try to do as much work as we can do. But the flood last year really set us back.
Right.
But still, I mean, we've got gravel coming up, we're not starting hauling, we've got all sand back, you know, we still got a bulk load of ditch work to do, and trying to get back. But, you know, we got paving, of course, one way to go, we'll be back on that right now, but Hutchins said they'll hold the bid price from what, from last year. So, even for the new areas that we wanna pave, they'll still, so we don't have to go back with the bid on that, so.
I mean, it sounds like there's enough other, you just rattle off a whole bunch of projects that need attention.
Well, it's, it's, it's the way it is every, every year, Eric, I mean, it's, it's nothing new to us.
Yeah, you just have to prioritize.
You, you know, you're just trying to pick and choose your days, and like, like I said, you, you just two, two guys ripping up the side sidewalks and that's it. And then usually for pouring, they're just, you know, four of us doing it first thing in the morning. And then two, two of us staying, staying there until, you know, we can, you know, shape it up and stuff like that and go on, so.
Sounds like we'll try and put it up to bid and if we can't, well.
I think I'd push this back, I wanna push it back on you and say just. Manage it, do what you think is the best thing to do.
Okay. I'll make a note of that.
Really? Cause I think, I think, I, I don't know, what I'm hearing is that people wanna, the board wants to contract out where it makes sense to contract out. We want Tommy's crew to have the ability to focus on the roads and, and do their priority items. But, I don't really know the schedules, and if, if something else makes sense, if there's. I don't know, yeah, I think you're closer to it.
What I'll do is I will get ahold of some companies that do sidewalks, and we'll get a price, a current price per cubic yard on foreign sidewalks. See how far we can go, and that's how far we'll go.
And is that, is that still gonna tie up our road crew doing the site?
They still have to do the site work.
They still have to do the, the demo.
Cause, cause concrete guys don't do that, like, that's just the way it rolls, or?
Well, if we had them do that.
I mean, it's just more money.
Then we'd have to pay them to do that.
There's no doubt that the twenty-four thousand isn't gonna go very far, no matter how you spend it.
I'm well aware, it's not gonna go very far.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like on the order, but it's more like a change order than a project.
Okay, I'll take care of it, give you guys some updates.
Alright, sounds good, thank you.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think I pissed off from that people.
Just me, let's see if we can piss them off.
Well, we're not gonna make everybody happy.
It just way sounds awful.
We make some people happy sometimes, alright, next is Hardwick Police Department report given by Mike Henry, he just had to step out because he got paged. So, we're gonna skip over Mike for now and move to Hardwick Electric Department, we have Scott Johnstone here, who has been gracious enough to join. Hardwick Electric for an interim period, you're really from Morrisville Water and Light.
That's right, Scott Johnstone, yeah, my day job really is Morrisville Water and Light, but for the next three months, I'm gonna do double duty. Um, cause that's what neighbors do for each other, and you guys are in a pinch, so, we're glad to help out, and I'm glad to be here, and I'm mostly glad to report to you that. We've got a really great team, um, we've got issues to deal with, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that here. Um, but the people that are there care deeply about this community and the work that we do, we need a few more linemen, if you know any electrical linemen, send them our way, because we are really, really hurting. Um, Morrisville Stow and Weare Leach are all helping us keep the lights on at night, we're all taking turns, doing shifts, so. Uh, the whole, you know, the whole community of municipals is helping out, uh, and, and we all do that for each other, so, happy to do that. Um, but the team is really a very strong, what I'd say to you is, in terms of having a foot planted in the day, and in a minute I'll talk about tomorrow. Is, it's not lost on me in the short time I've been, uh, working with Hardwick here, uh, we, we've taken out some public hits. And we gotta really work hard on public trust issues, um, and I think we've got the team to do it, um, you know, I'm not sure we've even found all of those issues yet. Um, I'm actually still trying to unearth whatever's left, um, for those sorts of issues that might be hanging out there, but the commission's really focused on that. And we get that there, we've taken some policy positions over time that are not the most customer friendly. Little things, like, if you need a bigger transformer, you know, do you pay for the whole new transformer, or do you pay for the marginal difference, right? Um, there's little things now, you can say, well, the state has rules about this, they do, and they can either be portrayed as, as black and white, or the truth is, they're red. And there's room to move, and there's a whole panoply of ways that utilities cross from on duty things. So, we're, the commission's already grinding through these things, they're not easy to change, um, so it'll take a little time. Uh, we're, our, our office staff is gonna start putting some public messaging out to the public, we've never done Facebook or anything else, but. I don't know, we just gotta get connected to the community, all of the staff are connected to this community, Hardwick Electric needs to get reconnected to this community. Um, and that's really, in terms of the work we're doing today, there's a million things we're doing with make ready work for fiber and, you know, trying to get the, the hydro dam back up and running, which I think it will be in two or three months. Other FEMA stuff, there's a lot going on, but that's really the focal right now, hiring a GM, hiring line workers and getting reconnected, finding out the balance of these customer issues. And starting to turn a corner, um, at the same time, there is no time to wait to start, uh, thinking about what's coming at you like a freight train in the future. Cause it's coming at every utility in Lamont, whether it's big as GMP or as small as Hardwick Electric in Morrisville. And that is that everything that you think you've ever known about a utility is going to change in the next ten years, you know, legislature passed, you know, going to do standard bill. We gotta be a hundred percent by twenty thirty-five, that seemed like a long time, in utility speak, that is tomorrow, like tomorrow now. Some of you probably think that's a great idea, some of you probably think that's the dumbest thing you've ever heard, it doesn't matter, the freight train's coming either way. So, from my, I, I approach these issues that come from Montpelier as, you know, it's, have whatever opinion you want, we gotta get ready, right? Um, I actually think that's the less important of the bills that are coming at us, the big one will likely come next year if the legislature does as expected. And passes the clean heat standard, um, I don't, we have not done those numbers at Hardwick Electric yet, but I can tell you in Morrisville, I've done those numbers. And we, we peak at about eight and a half megawatts right now, at, if we really electrify everything, we will peak at about twenty-two megawatts. Which means every transformer's too small, every wire's too small, the substations have to be updated, you know, you gotta add battery storage on your system, because all you have is variable renewables. Um, and I suspect, well, you, you have a smaller peak than us, I think it's around six, so maybe you're gonna be fourteen or fifteen, you're gonna have the same effect, right? Um, so there's all of this kinda getting ready, now, it doesn't necessarily mean rates will be terribly higher, because we're gonna sell, you know, a hundred and fifty percent more electricity to help pay for it, right? But we gotta actually do all that math, like, I can't tell you if it'll cost more or less for customers today, I can tell you that in Morrisville, but I can't tell you that here. So, the commission is starting down all these paths, really, an interim shouldn't start this, but like, we're supposed to submit. An integrated resource plan, which is a thirty-year look at what we have to do here in October. Now, we'll probably be able to get an extension to that, because you have an interim, um, but the commission has got to like walk through the steps. Of understanding what all this stuff you, it's like, I just gave you the, the Cliff Notes version of the Cliff Notes version of stuff that's coming, right? Uh, for tonight, and I know you're behind schedule, you've got a lot on your plate, um, but that's gonna really, uh, both, both turning the corner with the customer, um, history. And then getting ready for the future, the rest of it's just management, like, you know, hiring people, you know, taking care of people, all of that stuff, like. That's just management, like, Hardwick will be just fine, so what I would tell you is, just, and then I'll answer your questions, is. There's no doubt in my mind based on the fact you have a great solid system and you got a good team, like, your best, the best days are in front of this department, not behind it. Um, so, I'm happy to answer the questions, I don't know if you like getting real technical or if this stuff is okay for you first time here, so.
Well, Scott, you're wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, are you helping with the general manager recruitment process, or?
Yeah, I'm supporting the commission, I mean, they'll make the hire, I'm helping pre-screen, we have, last time I heard, we have eight applicants so far, so it's on the street. You know anybody good, drive into our website, um, there's a, there's a position description there, you'll likely be happy to know. The position description, which I had no hand in at all, um, entirely by the commission, is focused on cooperation and community building, community customers. That is the focus that they're hiring for.
So, you did say you do know the number in Morrisville for the results of the pre-heat standard, and I'm guessing, my guess would be that it is gonna, the rates will go up?
The rates will go up, but they may not go up more, they'll probably go up about proportionally the same as if, if we kept the current system.
Right.
Electricates are gonna go up, right?
Yes.
Um, but, you know, we've been twenty years, presume Hardwick's the same, we sell basically the same amount of product as we did twenty years ago. Because of net metering and efficiency Lamont, um, those of you that are business people know, if you don't increase your sales, you don't have a very valuable business. Without raising rates, and then can the customers afford it, um, you know, so it's a, the current path is a really tough path, right? Um, and so, there's a piece of electrification that's like, hell, you're finally gonna sell more, except we gotta like, even if we do everything right. We, we, people do net metering and people do energy efficiency, even if we do that, we're gonna more than double our peak.
Right, and, and we're also gonna have to double our infrastructure.
Absolutely.
So that capital house is gonna be.
That all, and that's why you gotta run the math, like, I don't know your system well enough.
Right, every system actually would be different because of what exists.
But you also have other great things going on, they're gonna have you do some of that, and again, you're gonna get more sales to pay for it, but, and I know it's a bit of a delicate subject, but. You know, the, the work going on down at Yellow Barn and the gray building next to it, you know, there's other development that's being considered out there right now. That, that end of town, we're probably gonna have to upgrade that, that was for five years out, I told the commission, we probably gotta start the engineering on that in twenty-five, so we can do it in twenty-six. That's good news, like, you're having growth in town, I presume every one of you likes that idea. Um, so, like, yeah, and that's the sort of stuff, like, we gotta embrace that and not see that as a problem, right? And I, you know, that will just take a little time to kind of rework the culture of the organization, and, and again, we got the right people that are ready to embrace it.
That sounds great, because that's where the focus, I mean, there's damage control needs to be done there.
Yep, I've heard a lot about it, I have to try to unearth it.
It's right, no, no, but, I mean, that's an important thing to a small local utility, and having that, that relationship that you wanna, you wanna, you wanna keep it in town.
Uh, could you, I, this is a little bit down the weeds, but could you speak a little, give a little bit more of an overview about the Wolf River Hydro Plant and where that's at?
Yeah, Wolf River, I was there a couple days ago with FEMA, um, the, um, all of the equipment. Um, the, all of the equipment, the, you know, we, all of the electronics flooded, I mean, the whole thing flooded, you know that, but I'll go through it piece by piece. FEMA allowed us to do what's called mitigation, lift all the electronics ten feet in the air, so if the whole building went under again, at least the electronics would. Um, so that's done. The, the generation, generator itself, the turbine, all the pieces just came back, they're sitting on the floor. Um, so they're all be, being installed in the next couple of weeks, and then the generator will be ready. What came to light, and I don't know how, it didn't get started earlier, I can't remake history, but all of a sudden, like, the first day I was here, everyone said, I think we probably have to dredge out in front of the Penn Stock to be able to run this then, and some, for some reason, that wasn't on the list. So, that's why I took FEMA down there, we now have an approved project with FEMA, but now we gotta go through the same thing, you were talking about getting a whole bunch of bids, can't just go pick somebody, you're not allowed to do that, so we gotta go through that. Fortunately, we just finished the exact same project in Morrisville. It's like, I know all the contractors, I already have a contract template, I already did the project, we just finished it two weeks ago. So, hopefully, we can just take that whole process, flip it really quick, and get that done. I'm hoping in two to three months, that thing can be running. Um, the generator will certainly be ready within three or four weeks, but the question is, how quickly can we flip the dredging? We also gotta get Army Corps permits, state of the month permits, state of storage preservation permits, again, I got them all in Morrisville, so I know how to do it. And they know, basically, I'm proposing exactly the same project, so they shouldn't have to review it much. So, hopefully, that's gonna be a benefit for you, that the learning we did in Morrisville will just travel right up the road.
Sounds like a lot of the learning you've done in Morrisville's traveled up the road.
We're working on it.
We appreciate it, yeah, we're up the river.
Good. Well, I, I should be here for at least two more months, maybe three, depending on when the new person starts, and, uh, you know, but it's really, it's one of those things that's good both ways, right? So, you know, so right now, we're giving you a hand, you've given us a hand in the past. Right now, you don't have any linemen, and we do, so we can help you. You know, it was only three years ago that we had one lineman, and you and others helped us. So, um, so, again, this is, this is the way that these small municipalities can make it, is if we help each other. So, that's all that's going on here, nothing more than that.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Mike Henry, we skipped our order a little bit.
Oh, Mike, real quick.
Yeah.
Because we got number three, work on two, that's part of mine. The only thing I got is that Jason's last years is resigning. Jason came on as a part-time temporary for us. Unfortunately, you know, we tried, hoping that he'd stay, but, uh, just, he just brought his head with state's attorney, and just wanted to stick around, so, for that reason.
State's attorney, yeah.
So, uh, other than that, we're-
We've identified the problem, there's no doubt, we just gotta find a solution.
So, other than that, we're trying to figure out right now, we've got two people in the part-time academy, trying to get them lined up for full-time academy, which starts in August. You know, we'll at least get one of these guys for full-time.
Great.
That's the plan right now. Same boat as him, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna get people vacation time this summer, being short-staffed as we are, just trying to make it work, so that's it.
Good, thank you for making things work. Questions for Mike? All right, you're gonna move us along. Item one, select board to consider approving a liquor license.
I make the motion that we approve.
What? Oh, he wants to speak.
Because we'll want to mainstay, they're not all renewals.
Oh, okay.
There's a new one, the Cabot Foods for second class. And then, there's also, usually, I don't throw in the permits, because they're like a day or two, but this one just came in this week, and it's the Caledonia Spirits. They do samplings and sell opened bottles at the farmer's market, and they put in for a permit for the entire summer.
And that's an outside consumption permit, or is that not?
It's a special events permit.
Special events.
Yep.
Got it, telling spirits.
I don't think we should let them back in, eh?
And then I also put on, only I don't present them to you until they've paid their, their fee, but there's two of them on here who have sent their applications in, but haven't paid the fee, so I put them on just because when they send their fees in, that way they don't have to wait till the, their Thursday in July, because their licenses expire at the end of June. So, that way they come in the next ten days, you'll have already reviewed and approved, and then I can just go online in the portal and approve them then.
Great. Now, Danny, back to you.
Make a motion that we approve a first-class license for RBI Hardwick LLC, doing business as Positive Pi, and a second-class, new second-class license for Cabot Foods Limited, doing business as Cabot Creamery, Yellow Barn, a second-class license for DG Detail LLC, doing business as Dollar General, a third-class license for RBI Hardwick LLC, doing business as Positive Pi, outside consumption permit for RBI Hardwick LLC, doing business as Positive Pi, and a special events permit for Caledonia Spirits Inc.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Tanya, or we, she's already checked that all of the above, the renewals have no impact. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you, thank you, Tanya. Uh, next, item two, select board to receive updated and amended unified development bylaws from zoning administrator on behalf of the planning commission, although perhaps April, on behalf of the planning commission. Um, and we have to set a public hearing date for, hopefully, for September.
Motion to approve the amended and updated unified development bylaws.
We're not approving, we're just, uh, I think we're just receiving.
Receiving, setting the public hearing.
And setting the public hearing date.
Let's do it.
You wanna set the public hearing date, that's what you wanna do?
I wanna move on.
Yep.
For September fifth, is that?
September fifth, a good day, what day is the?
Good day for you, good day for me.
That's looking very far ahead, is it Thursday? Okay, third Thursday.
Why is it so far ahead there?
First.
September?
Oh, we're jumping ahead.
September fifth is the first Thursday.
Okay, good.
First Thursday in September.
So, we're gonna do it at, what, five-thirty?
She requested more than half an hour.
Five?
She said at instant hour.
For what, is she gonna read up to us?
Public comment.
For Kristen, yeah.
We're anticipating public comment this time around?
I've been to dozens here, and I didn't ever see more than two seconds of public comment. I bet you it's an hour, but.
Planning commission had ours, and we did have some people attend.
Kristen's wish is my, my desire, because she's all that.
Sherry's saying they had, they did have people come to the planning commission.
Good, that's fine, I just, I hope so.
So, we're doing five PM on the fifth, five on the fifth?
Five PM on the fifth.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck, Tony.
I need one of those.
No, you don't, you had one, you gave it up.
You think is it get a jail-free card? She's going from one to another.
I'd like to, um, hear from the planning commission, if possible.
Oh, wow.
About the development, or the modernization stuff.
Read. You got one of these?
All right, so hang on, did you make a motion?
Uh, I, sort of, I made a motion that was not accepted. It was rejected.
We never finished it, so.
Well, I think it's fine to make the motion and get that on the table, and then we'll have a little discussion.
Motion to receive, I don't know, is we need a motion to receive these, do we?
No, a motion to set the-
And a motion to set the meeting for the fifth of September at five PM.
There we go, that's a good motion.
For at least fifty-five minutes of interactive discussion on these.
Do we, second, thank you. So, Dave, you wanna say?
Sure, um, just for you, and also perhaps the audience, a little bit to get the information. As you know, the planning commission writes, researches and writes the town plan, and submits it to you, and then, um, the bylaws are examined again to make sure they conform to the new town plan, so it's an iterative process, so we're constantly going back, let alone, oftentimes, the state says, these are the new rules, which we have to update our bylaws for flood debt. So, the last time the unified development bylaws were updated is 2017, and that led to some time for us to look at our town plan, which we restructured, and that went to, uh, you approved in 2019, and that's our present town plan, it's like modifications. One of the things we looked at with the town plan was, once again, the issue of housing, the missing middle, what we could do to try to look at the bylaws to address that, and that was just on our own, and in August of twenty-two, that was the update of the bylaws for accessory dwelling units, where we changed the specifications, and who could be owner and whatnot on it, to address it. As we, that continued, looking at the issue of housing, we did receive a Vermont Housing Opportunity, Vermont Bylaw Modernization Grant in 2023, which allowed us to hire a consultant, which is excellent. We ended up going with Heather Carrington, CCTS, and so, for the past year, she's guided us through the process of going through our entire bylaws to try to identify obstacles to either developing housing, or things that slowed the process down. Meanwhile, the state passed the Vermont Housing Opportunities Made for Everyone, or Home Act, in June twenty-three, at which point, that was, uh, some very specific regulations, some of which we were looking at, but the state basically kind of took it out of our hands, said, you will do that. And those, many of those became implemented in July, and the entire act will be implemented by December first of this year, twenty-four. So, since we're already working with Heather, we folded those in, looked at those, and put those in. The Home Act only applied to households or businesses that were served by both sewer and water in the town. So, it didn't apply to East Target, which was only water, um, so basically, it was roughly, if I'm thinking of it, downtown in the downstream areas of Hardwick Village. So, we implemented those rules, we were also went through the bylaws, um, and looked and made sure that they were consistent outside of the area. For instance, the requirement for parking, uh, the state says, in, in Home Act areas, sewer and water, it's one, um, parking space per unit maximum, you can't say one and a half or something like that. We looked at the other requirements in the other zoning districts, and we said, well, that makes sense, if we're doing it fair, we should do it everywhere. So, what we did was look in the other zoning districts for the bylaw regulations that, um, basically, and made sure they made sense, that there was no reason they differed from a more encouraging, um, uh, process. And so, it's like duplexes, um, are allowed wherever a regular single-family home is owned, and we said, that makes sense. So, that's an example, as you go through, and so, um, that, so that's one of attempts to improve housing, and this is primarily the missing middle, by removing obstacles, by dimension requirements, lot size, units, density, and also, hopefully, speeding up the process, what was permitted versus what we'd have to do in D R B kind of examples. Then, uh, the other thing we needed to do, since, rather than have you have many updates, was the flood resiliency. Because of the twenty-three flooding, that was, uh, a lot of changes, and things that needed to be done, so we made updates to our flood overlay, and that's why that's in the list, too. One final thing we were doing was, you'll notice that a series of parcels were in one district, and we're moving them into another, and that is because they are being served by water and sewer, but they were outside of the downtown. And so, we just moved them in, so that basically, all of it matched with the urban compact Hardwick 2015 definition, and so therefore, we could refer to all those, uh, Home Act requirements, which are sewer and water, by referencing our urban compact 2015 map. And we wouldn't have to say, in these seven additional ones in this other district, if that makes sense. Okay, so, it's more of a, uh, uh, folkkeeping type of thing. Nothing really changes for the homeowners.
Oh, yeah, it does. I could now put thirty-five apartments on my property.
Whoa, no, I'm talking about moving these, just from one district to another, moving the boundary of the district.
Yeah.
Okay.
My property was one of the ones that got changed, so, now I can build closer.
Okay. Well, let's just say, we don't, we don't have a complaint for any personal owners on this, all right?
No, I don't care.
Uh, so, um, and, uh, that is the quick, real fast nutshell of a little over a year's work, and Heather was excellent, couldn't have done it without her, and the planning commission, I got a great team. I just sit around and, you know, let them do stuff, and Kristen, you know, looks at me if I try to get out of line, so, between those guys, I think they got a good product. If you have any questions on this before the hearing or something, Kristen's a perfect person to bring in, who can speak in more depth than I can.
Great, thank you very much for the overview, good. Questions, uh, for you?
You good, Opie? Oh, okay, just checking, I noticed you were listening pretty definitely there.
All right, so, we gotta, uh-
Did it once, did it right.
Yeah, so, um, we have a motion on the table to do the, set the hearing date for the five, five o'clock on September fifth.
Five oh five.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Yes, Tim.
Tim.
Tim, Tim's here? Where'd Tim get here?
Didn't even ask.
He is, he is. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, select board to review proposed traffic ordinance changes and consider adopting the changes. So, there's a-
So, this is just on the parking issue?
Yeah.
Last year, we changed the speed issue, so the only thing that shows us time is the parking.
Yeah, but you, there's a, there's a lot of red line, there are a lot of small changes through that.
Yes, there are, hopefully, everybody read through it, no, hopefully, we-
I read through it, I can't say that I always knew where, like, ninety feet was, and a hundred and thirty-five feet was, but I just trust that you got it right.
I hope I got it right, I got my little tape measure out, the measure that can-
And east and west, sometimes they're a little fuzzy for me, but.
For the sake of the public, should we just have Mike talk through the main points?
Main points are just, uh-
Well, some of the main points are, you know, everything downtown has shifted, uh, so parking spaces have shifted, they were, they were a lot more before, they're, they're less, those are two-hour parking. Uh, I got a woman put Sherry on, on this, uh, I think one of the big changes is on Depot Street. We made, just right down there, made a small change, same over, like, parking there. Just to alleviate some of the problems we have there. Parking is on, uh, currently, uh, there's no parking on the, uh, the east side of Depot Street, but for large events, um, there's parking on the west side. Uh, so, those are the main changes, uh, trying to get somebody up.
So, it looked to me like a lot of the changes were just aligning the ordinance with what's painted on the ground.
Yeah, and, you know, no parking in front of, uh-
Intersection.
Yeah, intersection, and there's some road things that are wrong in there as well, so those have been corrected.
Yeah, so then, so we approve this, or not, or whatever, then thirty days, there's thirty days for the public to respond to it before any signs go up, or whatever. That's how it works.
You have somebody who wants to talk about that?
I have additional for this. Oh, okay, great.
Charles.
Yeah.
I didn't recognize you.
All right, state your name, please. Uh, I'm done running, I'm here on behalf of the-
I'm here on behalf of the Calgary All-Trail Travelers A T V Club. We recently just received an indoor permission from the owner of the Wompanaki camp to open up a lot of trail system up there. But we have no way to get there. So I'm hoping that we can get approved a few roads to get us from our trailhead up to the camp. We're looking to open up Route 14, which could be kind of iffy because I don't know if that's in our town or if that's going to be stayed. On that end, it's things up until West Hill. Open up West Hill, Bunker Hill, Wompanaki and Tucker Brook to allow us to get into camp from that side. And then on the other side of town with the loss of trail from behind Danny's and a, a joint landowner, we're hoping to open up all of Mcville to Scott Road. And then Glennside down to Route 15 so that our riders can access K Service Station as additional fuel and gas. And then also Kerry Road from Route 14 all the way to Mcville because we only have a section of that road right now open to the trail. So if we could open up all of those, that would be excellent.
Doug, that's a lot of roads.
It is.
Do we have a map?
I don't have a written map. I do have it all written down, road for road that I can give everybody.
So what we've done in the past, because we had, we had a similar request was that somebody came, I think, was it Wolford? Anyway, somebody came and there was a map. And it basically showed what is existing and where it ends and then what you needed to go to. And so during that request, we approved coming to the diner, right? But it was super helpful to basically see visually how that worked.
Yeah.
But this is not.
Part of the traffic ordinance.
This is not part of the traffic, the.
That should be an agenda item.
Yeah, there's, there's separate A T V ordinance.
Yeah.
So we can open that up?
So we can open that up later for this. This is specifically dealing with just the parking.
Well, the traffic ordinance has a subsection of parking.
Yeah, a subsection. That's a subsection we're working on right now. The A T V is within the, within the traffic limits.
Oh, it is?
Are you sure?
No, it's a standalone, it's a standalone.
Yeah.
For sure.
There were a couple of other small things that we were hoping to change within the A T V ordinance. Nothing crazy, but we were hoping to change the speed limits to maintain speed limits within the roads. So there'll be some impeding on the roads that are already open. We also want to lengthen the curfew.
I don't think I understood that first bit about the speed limit.
So for example, from the, on the section of Route 14 from Kerry Road to the center of town where we have open, part of that is 40. It's currently for A T Vs, 25, but that means we'll be impeding traffic.
Yeah, you can't do that. That's all, all this needs to be changed. The speed of it has to be the same as the.
As the, as the curfew.
That's just left over from the days when we were, day one, literally.
And then we want to lengthen the curfew. So instead of, I think, current curfew is 11 to 6 P M to A M. We're looking to actually change that to 9 P M to 7 A M just to help alleviate some of the road traffic during the off night hours. And then we also wanted to add a, 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 a statement basically stating that if there's an issue with A T V traffic on roads, that the club is included so that we can help with public outreach and that sort of thing to help alleviate any future issues.
All right. Yeah, so it sounds like it's great for something to consider. We should probably, I mean, it sounds like Kaylee at least would appreciate a map. And we'll have to look at our ordinance. So.
Then make it an agenda item.
Make it an agenda item next time or the time after, whenever it is.
It's a good start.
It's a great start.
Thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
Hey, that's a good record. It is a standalone document from the.
So back to the traffic ordinance, which includes parking. Do, do, did everybody get a chance to review it? Are people comfortable adopting it? Do you want to wait? Do you want to change it?
I'm fine with it. I wish we did enforcement component, but.
There is.
Well, there is, but as long as it gets done.
Yeah, and the enforcement has happened in a lot of situations, especially, you know, where the trucks have been having problems.
No, I, I've heard, I've heard you guys just talked about those. So that's all, I'm good with it. It's just, let's, let's. I also heard that people were willing to pay a $10 parking ticket just to practice for an apology.
Oh, so that's another thing.
The fee has changed as well.
Yeah, you don't want to, you know, a $10 parking ticket for dinner is not, that's a pretty good parking price, to be honest. I can tell you where I'm, I can tell you where I'm.
We bumped it up to $500.
Yeah, no, but you know, that's.
Don't throw me on that.
Yeah, no, most of.
25. 25, gosh, she was here, this is going to be terrible. We're giving her a lot.
Just kidding. Whatever, whatever the charging fees, 25 from that?
25.
25, there's more for handicap.
Yeah, it's more for handicap, just everything went up.
I'm good.
Those fee changes looked appropriate to me. I agree with Danny there.
I mean, 25 is.
$10.
It's not a deterrent.
That piece is not good enough for $25. It's $10, absolutely.
I'm going to miss this, but what's, what happens if you don't pay it?
So once there are, you know, three, three assessed, if you have to be done, towed. Or we can put a, we don't have a boot, so we're going out for the towing.
You take the environmental operator.
He's joking.
It causes stirring, like a boot, a boot on a vehicle.
Boo.
Might be a little bit.
I could go in the first edition.
All right, so we're going to vote on making this happen right now?
Yep, I guess that we accept the, that we accept the proposed changes to the traffic ordinance and adopt those changes as well.
I second that. For sure.
Any more discussion on the, those changes or?
Boo.
A boo.
I'm talking to them.
All right, all in favor of approving the updated traffic ordinance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Imposed, motion carries. Thank you for all your work on that.
Thank you for all your, you, it was all your work on that, too. That's right, thank you.
I did a little bit of work just saying.
She consulted.
And, and.
Thank you, Sherry.
I asked Mike for help.
As a reminder, the importance, the importance of that is that we need that ordinance to back up anytime you're trying to ticket somebody for where they're parked. The ordinance needs to agree with what's on the ground, right?
Right.
Ideally.
Yeah.
That's the way it works.
So it's good to do. All right. Next, I implore a select board to approve and sign the lease agreement from V Trans for the trailhead in East Hardwick. We've got a picture in our packet of where that is.
Can I make a motion to approve we do that?
And just as a note, that the V Trans is making leases available for this type of thing for a dollar a year, a dollar for five years?
I believe there's no cost.
I said a dollar.
Okay.
I think it might be a dollar.
Just because I had done something.
Right. Well, so it isn't something else.
Right.
It's above the table, a dollar above the table and a five below the table.
Or we can.
Yeah, do we, sorry, you had a motion, right? Danny had a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
So my only question is, in the Exhibit A map, they outline the red as being on the, what I would call the east side of the L V R T.
Yeah.
But then in Exhibit A map, we show the brush hog space to the west side as well. But is that town old currently? So are we not leasing that? We're just leasing the right-hand space?
We're just, I believe that we're just leasing the right-hand space. And I believe that this Exhibit A comes from the proposal that came.
Yeah.
From that group, you know, that consortium. And so this, they, this is what they proposed, but it's not what V Trans is allowing.
We're not dealing with the other side.
It's what we provided V Trans to draft the lease, indicating that we want it on the south side of the.
But we're going to, we're going to clear and.
That's a potential.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That's just something we might do.
So our lease, the lease that we're approving tonight is in the first image, which is the, more of the length of the east side.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. And then I just, I don't know if there's a point for right now, but I.
I don't know either.
But I think it's worth mentioning that when the flood happened, there was Stevens Lane washed out completely to Bedrock. And it washed out on that, on the, what's currently being proposed is the parking side of this project.
Well, that's where it landed, right?
That's where the water, yeah, the water all landed on that side. So I think if we're, and it's a great.
Does that mean there's a lot of gravel there that we can?
Already?
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of gravel there. But I think it's something, the only thing that saved the L V R T was that concrete pad. Basically, the water went like under that little concrete bump out. And that hole from the center line all the way down into that neighbor below was completely washed out. So I'm just saying that I think it's a different point than tonight. Tonight, we're just talking about the lease. I think we really need to think about that because we don't want to spend a lot of money on parking and infrastructure and not deal with those potential water issues. And those water issues happen from further up because of ditching and culverts. But I'm just saying, I just think it's like.
There are water issues there that we need to address.
That we need to think about.
Okay, got it.
So with, with this lease, we can now potentially, if we have the funds to do so, we can now develop an engineering and architectural plan for that.
And then go for funding.
For that trouble.
The only reason.
And we would deal with the stormwater.
Right.
As part of that.
As part of that.
Right, and that doesn't necessarily have, ideally, we deal with the stormwater 50 feet up from the parking. So it doesn't really affect the lease at all. I just wanted to mention it, that it's like.
It affects the project, though, so we would take that into consideration.
Yeah.
Good idea. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have any more discussion on the lease? All in favor of, do we have to, yeah, of approving the lease agreement with V Trans? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Imposed, motion carries.
That's the lease agreement. That needs to be signed by the whole select board.
There's two pages.
Two, there's two parts.
Next is Item 5. Select board to review and consider approving the sale of real estate policy.
This is the ordinance.
Wait, I missed that. Is it in here?
Yeah, it's written.
Yeah, I, so I, I don't have a problem with most of it, but the note at the bottom, I, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, so.
Not comfortable with that, really. I mean, I, it may not be rehabilitated to start with. And second of all, someone buys it, I don't know as we're going. I mean, there's some places you're going to want to have input. We're going to want to have input, but I hate to put deed restrictions on what someone can do with a property. I, I guess if you guys want, that's fine, that's just not the way I am.
I have an example that I just want to share, either way. So the, it would have been Sweetenburg. Sweetenburg property down by Tops off of Charlotte Way. So I dug that, that deed up. And there was a five-year covenant on that deed that they would have to bring that property up to a value above $100,000 so that we could cook the town. The village conveyed that parcel to Sweetenburg.
For free?
For free. With a covenant that they would have to bring that property up to $100,000 in value or else, and maintain it for five years. So that is an example of a deed restriction.
Well, that's an example on a deed restriction on property that's gifted by the town.
Correct, but we could.
Not to say.
Well, it's conveyed.
But it's conveyed.
All right, that's fine. It's just.
I'm just giving you an example.
If it makes people feel good to have control over something like that, then I'm.
It doesn't mean we have to do a deed restriction.
Well, I know, but it's just.
But if someone asks us to convey a property for a dollar.
You could do it anyway without having it in the policy.
But the whole point of the policy is to make it fair. And so if you're, it's a bit vague, like who's getting a deed restriction, who's not.
Yeah.
That's good.
Which is fine, which is fine.
Leaves us more leeway.
Yeah.
Right, but it's also like, anyway, the whole point is to not give, is to make it be consistent. And so.
Right, now we're given the option, the, the ability to, individuals to direct the sale of real estate in directions they feel is more important than what maybe the general public does.
Or for us to set parameters for some people and not for others.
Right, same, I think the same. Yeah, I think we mean the same thing, basically, yeah.
So to me, though, I look at policies like this and think it's good because it kind of lays out a, a method. But I think it, I think it's good that we as a board don't box ourselves in to a point where we can't act appropriately in, in a certain system.
So my initial thought when I read that was no. And then my secondary thought was, if you're going to do something like that, it needs to be not a note, it needs to be in the policy. Policies shouldn't have notes. Policies are written to be policies. And it needs, it needs to be differently worded, that maybe, you know what I'm saying?
Needs a little wordsmithing.
Needs a little wordsmithing. I understand what our intent is and I agree with that. We do want to be able to retain some sort of, but I think we have that. We have that broad, whether we want to sell it or not, authority, period. But if we can wordsmith that a little bit and not make it a no, but make it part of the policy.
I mean, does it make sense to frame it in a way that's, because this, this is underneath the authority section to basically, we don't have to wordsmith right now, but to basically say something like, we, as a select board, we grant the town manager to have the authority to suggest deed restrictions.
I don't even think we need to call him out, I mean.
Or whoever, or us.
So let's go back to we don't need to wordsmith it right now.
Yeah, just go back to that.
Okay, and I, I would also just, as a general thing, it seems to me the authority section, a lot of this stuff is really, the wording is geared towards rehabilitation, which I think is not, I mean, that sometimes is the case, but it's not always the case.
Well, it's not the right word.
Right.
It's not the right word because someone.
So we need a little work.
Yeah.
We're in the, we're going the right direction.
Very close, yeah. Thank you, Sheri.
Who's going to do that work?
I don't know.
Um, well, you don't want it to be me.
You brought it to us.
I, I did, but.
You've done a part.
The, yeah, yeah. I mean, Kaylee and Danny were going to do this way back when and then it never happened. And so I brought it because I was tired of waiting, that's the truth.
We just told you we could do it.
You have a unique way of, yeah, when you're tired of waiting, choose a different.
I make a motion that Kaylee and Danny.
Yeah, I make the motion to Kayla and I'll do it because Sheri is just.
I'm done doing it.
All right, so.
If you bring something up, Sheri, take care of it, okay? We'll take care of it.
Wait a minute, so I think.
Wait, wait, be on a minute.
So, so it sounds like we're needing to change from what I've heard from, just to make sure I'm getting all the notes right, is that there are issues with rehabilitation as a word and then with the notes section.
As a note.
As a note, is there anything else?
Maybe.
Was like, is there any other big?
Right, the only other thing is I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the select board having input into what's going to happen to the project.
It should just be a part of the policy.
That's the way that is, right.
So you guys are going to work on that?
We are definitely going to work on it.
All right, sounds good. Groovy, next.
It'll be a team effort.
Yeah, seventy-three frickin' pages when we get done.
Next, item seven, select board to approve water and wastewater connection application for the yellow barn.
Okay, I have, um, I've talked to Tanya. Oh, she just left. I was gonna, no, just kidding. Um, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, I'm gonna do two permits, two applications. One for the yellow barn and one for the accelerator building. So I'm asking that the town, um, I'm asking that the select board waive the fee, the connection fee for that project because it's our property, town owned, and the project paid, and typically the connection fee pays for liters and the project pays for meters. And that's what I'm asking. And that we approve.
How much are the fees?
Um, five hundred for water and fifteen hundred for wastewater.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not about waiting for fees. I pay that right now. You guys are trying to do it.
Okay.
That building, that's, this whole project is not intended to be.
Well, we don't have to waive the fees if you don't want to, but if you could, if you could approve that location so they could connect.
So they're different. There's no, there's no big, big loads here, right? No big loads, O P?
Um, for the yellow barn, it's sixty-five people per day.
That's just separate, uh, no manufacturing.
There's two kitchen sinks, two bathrooms, two toilets.
Yeah.
And it's, uh, five employees and sixty patrons. That's the, the wastewater permit. Um, the yellow, the accelerator is, um, is, so it's a total of three hundred and seventy-five gallons a day.
But there's no, there's no big volumes.
B O D or T S S. No, no. Um, so that's why I wanna keep them separate. And then the other one is the accelerator, accelerator building and it's a hundred staff and fifteen gallons per day. Um, at, so it's three thousand gallons per day for the accelerator building.
So we have two?
So we have one right now because because the fit up isn't done, so we don't know exactly what, um, water usage is there yet. And we have this water usage. We can do both of them, but I wanna do the yellow barn because it's.
Because they're getting ready, Cav is getting ready to be banned.
Yeah, and we have to open up an account.
So, but when, okay, the, so this Cabot is gonna have a connection.
Yeah.
In, in the barn.
Correct.
And then in the new building, we're gonna have two.
Two-inch water meters.
And there, so there's a C A E one and this Jasper Hill one. So the total, we have three connections.
Three large water meters, yeah.
Okay, just, and so.
So we'll have three accounts.
What we'd like us to approve tonight is the.
Yellow barn.
The Cabot, yellow barn one.
Yeah.
Only?
Yeah.
Cause the other, and we'll do the others later?
When their fit up is designed, I know, C A E fit up is somewhat designed. We have no idea what's going on on the other side, so.
So we need to get that.
Hold off on that. But they're only, they're, they're only permitted for three thousand gallons a day, which is a lot, but.
This is a state gallon, state.
This is the state wastewater permit.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you asking for the feeding rate or is the project asking?
The town, it's our, it's a town building, so I'm asking for, to waive the fee for the town.
But it's not a town building.
Well, it's a town-owned building.
It is our building.
But, um, but, but it has tenants who are the ones who are actually the.
Paying the bills for the water.
Essentially for the water.
So the town has been on this building forever? I thought it was someone else owned it, just like the select.
They're paying the water rates.
So, so the.
The connection.
I have a word on the side.
So they're, the project has paid for the connections.
I understand that, but the fee for the.
The town of Hardwick would pay the fee.
Right, okay.
So I'm asking to waive the fee for our property to connect to the sewer.
So if Cabot is the tenant, why?
Cause it's our building.
So let me just back up and address your question about ownership.
Yeah.
Cause I think that, so the town, the way it's currently laid out is the, the town owns it. The town owns everything down there. We own the land, we own the buildings, but we have entered into a long-term lease with the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, which is a nonprofit that essentially just runs that.
Administers the leases.
And adminis, and then leases it out to the tenants, so that the town doesn't have to be involved in any of that. So the only interaction there for the town is the town to the N E K D C.
So when this whole project's run into the ground in twenty years.
Yeah.
The town has got a big pile of due.
No, actually, we would have a ten million dollar investment, our free and clear.
That would turn to housing.
Yeah.
In twenty years, we'd be free and clear of that property.
I guess we are realtors.
We don't, free and clear.
Right, yes. So we're, we're definitely landlords, which is not the way I'm visi, I thought it was when we liked the, the Senate added that that ships wrong sale. We are landlords.
We are. It would be possible to.
I would like to rewatch a lot of meetings where that landlord question was asked.
Okay.
But.
Um, if you, if, there are options. There are restrictions, but there are also options going forward.
But right now, we're just looking at a.
Well, I, I.
Correct.
I apologize because I didn't realize it was in a building, so if it's our building and we're paying to have it hooked up, then we may as well waive it.
And the mechanics of hooking it up are all done.
The tenants, and in that case, I would have said that, but, so.
But the tenants are the actual.
Rate payer.
Rate payers on our, on our water system.
Yeah.
So, so Cav is gonna pay for whatever they, they use and.
But they're not paying for the infrastructure in the building.
They're just leasing it.
Correct.
From Hardwick?
They're leasing it from the N E K D C.
So how much does N E K D C, where does their money come from? Who pays for their staff and their stuff?
So, so unfortunately, N E K D C does not have paid staff. It has an all-volunteer board and relies heavily on N V D A for help for accounting, grant writing.
So N V D A's their staff?
Yes. Which, yeah, there's not, we can go into a whole side discussion on, on how skinny that budget was and that's maybe the not the best way to build a project, but, um, but we did, we almost got it built. It's getting there.
Getting there.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the water and wastewater connection application for the yellow barn and waive the fees.
And authorize the town manager to sign the application.
And authorize the town manager to sign up the application.
Second.
More, would you have more discussion?
I'd also like a signature from the, so I, for a member as an applicant, so I'm not signature on the applicant and the person signing.
Well, that should be Tim. He made the motion.
Okay. Just designate.
Any more discussion where, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And we should probably talk sometime, Danny, about the income out that you're interested in.
We have to.
No, really.
It's a sale.
Bring it up every time.
I, I, I don't know about me not ever understanding the fact. I definitely misunderstood that we were landlords and we're gonna be giving stuff away, which, you know, one of the big concerns about that whole project was tax money, tax revenue, what's gonna, and the first thing we do, very first thing we do is have to waive a fee for infrastructure that we need to fund really, really badly. So that's where I'm coming from. I mean, the very, this is exactly what the concern of many, many, many taxpayers in the town of Hardwick for is, and the very first thing we do is waive a fee. So when, when the pilot is three dollars, it'll be three dollars, okay? So, yeah, there'll be a pilot, but it'll be three dollars. So it'll be good. And my taxes will go up. Because, so that's the way I see it.
I, so all that registered. However, if you wanna have a discussion about the ownership and the options going forward, I'd be happy to have that with you.
I, you were very good explaining stuff to me. I appreciate it.
Well, this stuff is complicated. It might not be good at explaining, but I will try.
No, you do well. And you put a lot of time into this and that's just.
There is a, a misconception with the public as to the burden on the taxpayers for this project.
Yes.
Um, and I think that it would be move us to revisit the pilot payments that are scheduled to, for the town to receive from the yellow barn project. And they're, they're, um, a tiered pilot payment. And within the five-year period, um, it's probably five times more than we would receive if that property was taxed like it was before.
If it hadn't been rehabilitated and new building.
And, and then the.
So we've, we've done pilots and we've done tax, uh, whatever.
Yeah.
When they don't have to pay full tax for the first.
It ramps up, yeah. Stabilization.
Stack stabilization. So I understand all that stuff from, but.
And there is, there hasn't been any financial burden other than the Economic Development Loan Fund on the Hardwick municipal taxpayer.
And that's not, that.
The loan fund is grant funded, it's hard taxpayer money.
That would be paid for within.
Promise.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's coming.
Yeah, it's coming. Checks in the mail.
Checks in the mail. All right. But we should talk sometime about the ownership structure and ways.
Yeah, that, and honestly, Eric, I appreciate it, but that might wanna be a public discussion so that everyone knows, not just me.
Be, be happy to do that.
C A E had a good presentation.
Yeah, I know that. They don't, you know, yeah, whatever.
Not tonight, but I'm, cause we're already, it's hot, but I'd be happy to do it here if you want. Uh, next is, uh, item eight, select board to approve, uh, fiscal year twenty-five fuel bid recommendations for propane, heating oil and road diesel. I did have questions. I don't know if other people do, but.
Yep.
Um, so.
I get it.
It looked like you're recommending Irving for, uh, propane and heating oil and, uh.
I'm listening.
And, uh. Yeah, exactly. So that's, so the Irving for propane and heating oil looks pretty clear, but for on-road diesel, uh, it's a, it's a choice between a higher fixed rate or a lower variable rate.
Right.
And it depends on, I, I did try to look up, um, forecasts for, for diesel fuel and the U S Department of Energy has stuff from twenty twenty-three on their website, which I didn't find terribly helpful.
So I looked at the, the five-year trend of diesel.
The past five years, yeah.
Yeah, Casey and I were kinda looking at the, where the price, uh, it's, it's been a gradual decline in on-road diesel pricing, the cost.
Yeah.
Um, so it's a gamble. If, if we were to go with that, we could potentially save sixteen, twenty thousand dollars.
Or at least.
With a variable.
With a variable. If the price didn't rise above, above the three oh nine.
And what's the worst-case scenario?
It goes to like three fifty.
What's our, what are your budget for this year?
Uh, you had to ask that. I think it's sixty thousand gallons.
Seventy-five thousand dollars says budget, thirty, twenty-five budget for diesel?
Yes.
Oh, yep, there is.
Where?
Red, in the red. Diesel is seventy-five thousand. Just go.
Okay. So, so in general, I'm in favor of fixed prices when you're doing budgeting because I feel like it, it just helps us be steady. But I'm very tempted to roll the dice on the variable rate on the fuel. I don't know. What, I'm really interested to hear from others.
Look, looking at the trend of, of the price of diesel, it's a gradual, you know, everything that goes down.
Yeah.
Must come up and who knows where the bottom of that is.
You said diesel price, on-road diesel prices have dropped?
They haven't dropped. They've just been on a downward trend in the last five years.
For what we, for the town, what we pay?
No, like the, we, I looked at the northeast.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember diesel being that much cheaper now. Still four dollars a gallon.
Yeah, but wasn't it five for a while?
It's.
No, no, it just got to five.
Yeah.
But that's, that's different than their, the cost.
I understand that's different than the cost, but still, the trend should be the same.
Yeah.
The cost is still the same.
So it is the same.
Yeah, if you.
But it's still.
And you're talking, it may have dropped, it may be a cup, a cent or two.
Correct, but the trend, but the trend is downward.
Right, right.
Or has.
Trust me, I'm the guy that burns seventy-five gallons of fuel a day, so I would love to see it really go down.
Are we willing to gamble on a year?
That's the question.
Of, of variable rate, which we can revisit next year and.
I, I don't care. I mean, I'm willing to gamble because I don't believe it'll be, go up any more than it will go down. You know what I'm saying? I, if it's only moving less than five cents in five years.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with rolling the dice. It hasn't moved five dollars in five years. You know what I'm saying? It's only moved a few cents in five years.
And it looks like.
It's been a click, click, click. One click down every year is good, you know, but twenty clicks is bad no matter whether it's up or down because it's gonna.
I'm willing to take that gamble.
Sherri?
Sure.
Sure.
I'm fine with taking the gamble.
I mean, we have the money in the budget anyway, so it's, we're not really, we're, we're hoping to save money. We're not, we're not over budgeting. We're hoping to save money.
Right.
Correct.
Kayla's plugging some numbers over here.
I am.
What are you thinking?
Oh, I, I mean, yeah, we, wasn't it last year they wouldn't give us fixed numbers?
Right. Or, no, that was.
Two years ago?
Two years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think as much as we could go fixed is great and then, and we've dealt with it before not having to be fixed.
So.
Roll the dice.
So I think we can, right now, the Irving fits within our budget.
And it can go quite, quite a bit and still fit within our budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I think it's not gonna go up as much as our budget.
Right.
If it goes up fifty cents, it's.
I think we have to.
I mean, we got ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars to play with, right?
It's, it's a good bet.
Cause if we go with the fixes.
Yeah, is it?
I can motion that we approve the fuel bid for Irving for F Y twenty-five.
Forty-five cents.
I second it.
I'm sorry.
We're having a meeting over here, don't we?
We have a motion from Kaylee.
Yep, I motioned to, uh, approve the Irving fuel bid for F Y twenty-five.
For all three types of fuel.
For all, for heating oil, propane and on-road diesel.
And Danny held seconded.
Yep.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor of, uh, going with Irving on all of them, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, item nine, select board to review and approve Hardwick Fire Department SCUBA. Can you say SCUBA or is it?
No.
It's not S C B A. It doesn't have a.
No, self-contained breathing apparatus.
Not, not underwater.
Underwater breathing apparatus.
Okay.
Completely different.
So it's not a SCUBA or something or?
S C B A.
It's just S C B A. Got it. I had questions about these too.
Okay.
I'm hoping, are you on it?
Um, I didn't too.
Cause Tom had to run his call.
No, I'm paying.
Well, he does have this memo in here.
I know. So, can.
I have a memo.
Tom did that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He wrote it. That's funny.
All right, who wrote the memo? Amanda wrote the memo. Thank you, Amanda.
I was like, this is pretty good.
Yeah, that's like one finger at a time. That would take them a while.
Oh, saddle down. He's not even here to defend himself. All right, so I didn't understand, like, okay, so when I look at these three bids, I understand Tom is recommending either Reynolds or Bergeron. Those are the two higher bids, right?
Yes, yep.
And the, I guess, one thing I didn't understand is that the lower bid from American Airworks.
It doesn't, that doesn't include maintenance though, right? Didn't I read that somewhere?
It doesn't.
This also doesn't seem to include the tanks.
Or the training.
No, it, I don't think it's as apples-for-apples bid for the other two, but.
I was just checking.
So I, that's what I picked up.
They, so they, neither does Reynolds. That's an adder of five thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars.
For?
The, the tanks, the cascade though.
Oh, no, I thought, I thought the tanks were the U N six thousand P S I storage, cause there's quantity for. Is that not tanks?
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, right.
But that's.
But all this is in their bid. All those options are in their bid.
Yes.
They're over there under options.
So can we just say, so the, the Reynolds bid is forty-six, two thirty-seven? Is that what I'm reading?
Forty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven.
Yep.
That's Reynolds. And then the Bergeron is, is it the last one?
Forty-seven.
That's Reynolds, and then the Bergeron is, is it the last one, forty-five? Or no, but that's what you were saying.
There was two, there was forty thousand, seven seventy-eight, and forty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve. Um, but the higher one is an enclosed frame, and the lower one is a open frame. And Tom said today that he would prefer an open frame, even though it's louder, he would still prefer.
Yep.
The open frame, and Reynolds, their bid is open frame as well.
So we only look at the two open frames.
So forty, seventy.
While you're reading them out, there, we also had a bid from American Airworks, which is not, doesn't include some of the components. But that was for twenty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine and twenty cents.
But they don't do, they don't.
And they don't put tanks in there.
And they're not, they're in West Virginia.
They don't do the.
Almost have a side of West Virginia.
Reynolds is very, very local, it's only Bergeron.
Do we have a, a capital line for that?
Yeah, what's our budget on this?
This is an insurance.
From the flood, yeah.
Okay.
So, I wish Tommy was here, because this is really important, that he doesn't say either. This is important for him as chief to say.
This is what I want.
Green or red.
He said he's worked with both Reynolds and Bergeron, they've both been great.
Yeah, 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 that, but that's not, I mean, as a chief, we need him to just tell us a choice of which one he prefers, I think. That would help me a lot, because from what, where, what I'm seeing is they're both very compatible, so I'm just gonna have to go with the lowest one.
I mean, I'm hearing that he want, that he's okay with either of them.
Well, that's true too, but.
So we just have to take him at his word, otherwise he would have been here.
Well.
Well, he had a fire.
Yeah, he probably thought he was gonna be here.
Yeah.
Never mind.
But I, I agree what you're saying.
But he, I mean, he says he's happy with, he's worked with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion, can we approve, give, basically, make a motion to approve the fire chief to purchase?
No, let's just make, I'll make the motion that we, um, use Bergeron, which is the lowest bidder, right? Just to confirm.
Um, it's the lowest out of the two that he.
For open, yes, lowest out of two for the sweet package, for the open frame system.
For a total cost.
For a total cost of forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Do we have a second?
Um, what's the price?
Forty thousand.
Seven, seven, eight.
Forty, seven, seven, eight, fifty-eight.
Cause the closed frame is the forty-five thousand.
Right.
I would say pending the approval of Tom, rather than that, cause he's the one who's used it all.
He's already approved.
Uh, he's, hey, he waived that.
I'm way behind.
Tom waived that, ain't no approval now, he could have done, he could have picked before.
I will, I will second your motion.
Thank you, so we have.
I mean, I know he don't care, but you know what I'm saying.
We have a second, and, um, did, did somebody go, Amanda, did you go through and make sure these things are both comparable? Like they have the same, or they're the same component?
Yes, Tom and I both did, um, this morning, and the only difference is the open versus enclosed, everything else is the same.
But I meant, oh, sorry, Reynolds versus Bergeron.
Oh, um.
Make sure those two, like, were, were those are kind of apples-to-apples.
Wait, 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 hold on, I just wanna stop a second, so, one of them's three-phase, do we have three-phase at the fire station? Do we know if we have three-phase? And then the other one's single-phase?
Boy, I wouldn't be surprised if what we have down there isn't three-phase, but I don't know the answer to that.
That's the difference.
We used to have a big hose dryer.
I keep looking this guy, I know I should have. You're just still here.
A three-phase compressor is eighteen thousand, and the single-phase compressor is twenty-three thousand.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
That's the difference between Reynolds and.
No, that's the difference between the two Bergeron quotes.
And one's open.
Well, it's a closed and unenclosed frame is the difference.
So that's. Right, so we need to make sure, so if we don't have three-phase power at the fire station, which we don't.
I don't know why we would, unless our last one.
Well, yeah, so we used to have this big honking hose dryer.
Okay.
Didn't the lights in every town in town, so maybe it wasn't three-phase, it should have been, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. Um, but again, I guess that's a question that. I don't know.
So maybe approving that, having the logistics check out.
So, but is it voltage on the, the Reynolds one?
It says either or, right?
Yeah, but I've got some either-or stuff, and you don't wanna run, you know, it's like running my welder on one-twenty or.
Or, yeah, it says voltage two-thirty, single-phase sixty amps, or two oh eight, two thirty, or sixty, three-phase sixty amps.
And there's a.
For twenty-seven.
So seems like very different.
Three-stage, seven and a half, huh, so theirs is definitely, the Bergeron is definitely bigger. It's got a seven and a half horsepower.
Yeah.
Three-stage, one, three-phase.
No, actually, no, because when you go back to the Reynolds one, and their options, there's a seven point five horsepower upgrade at the bottom, bottom.
Oh, down here, yeah, yeah.
Which does not say, if you're upgrading that, that isn't, uh, there's no electrical requirement called out on that upgrade.
Uh, Jesus, we shouldn't be doing this.
I, I agree, I think this is something that Tom needs to make a definite decision on.
Does he need this from us tonight? Amanda, do you know?
I mean, we need, for, to follow our procurement policy.
Yeah.
You guys gotta give us permission to spend this money.
Yes, the fire department has capacity for a group base for the compressor.
Oh, okay, alright.
I would, didn't think that would get by.
Good.
We have the original motion, Stan.
Good, alright, so we're gonna roll with Danny, Danny's motion to accept the Bergeron quote for forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight.
Okay.
Alright, back, do you need more discussion on that? Yeah, so, alright, so all in favor of approving that, um, Bergeron, for the S C B A.
Good job.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Danny, you aye?
Aye, 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 aye.
Okay, I'll oppose.
Thanks, Amanda.
Nay, thank you, motion carries, thank you, Amanda, thank you, Tom, in absentia. Uh, uh, alright, select board reports, new business or old business?
I just have a, a really, really quick crazy idea, but I want to pause about thinking about, uh, all of the work that potential J P Seeker is going to be doing in Hardaway. I think we should ask them to sponsor the fireworks for next year for the Memorial Day Parade.
Oh, sure, but what's all the work they're gonna be doing?
Well, we, they're potentially, I mean, I feel like we keep seeing them and we keep hiring them for stuff, it's like not the craziest of the.
No, it's a good plan, I don't know, they have to pay their bills a long time.
Yeah, it's not that much money.
Yeah, it's like three grand.
But seeking, uh, seeking sponsorship.
Six.
Six.
Next year will be ten.
For twenty minutes. I'm just saying.
That's a great idea.
It's a good idea.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
I think that's a kickback, but we'll have to look at the.
We still have an executive session.
Alright, so.
I like to put a straight up there.
Just did old business, I did ask at the end of last meeting about, um, uh, here getting an update on computer security. You'll do that sometime this summer, I don't care when.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we gave you that update.
I know, but I need a more, I need a more detailed update in this forum, ideally, and then sometime before, like, I don't know, September.
Our network is four or five.
Excellent, that's what we want to hear.
Well.
Love it, um, anything else?
I spoke to Pacific Standard, they were willing to collaborate on setting up these, uh, kiosk signs at the L B R P. And so, that's just in the work.
Yeah, I think Tracy's been trying to.
She's been trying to solicit, uh, vendors, which is the Avenue of Ape.
Yeah.
Honestly, that's administration of grant funds that might need to be added to that position, maybe not necessarily areas.
She's been looking for contractors to install the kiosks.
No, you're saying generally, the town is in need of the, of somebody's more project manager, grant administrator, right?
Right.
We don't need.
No, I know, Danny, Danny was just bringing that up, it's just a side.
No, the fact that Tracy's actually doing that.
It's good.
Is good, but.
We, we, we have a lot of need.
We have a lot of need in that exact thing right there.
We have a, uh, training coming up for project management, for the team.
For the team, good deal, Tuesday morning, I have that means.
Could I just bring something to you?
Carry on.
Um, so we're not meeting again until the end of July.
We go.
We, that's the plan.
It is.
Um, we also have, we have it posted that we're accepting bids for the two pieces of property that are for sale July eighth. My question is, are we planning on reviewing any offers at the July meeting? And if we are, then we should approve our sale of real estate before we discuss any offers, so I'm just wondering, like.
We don't have to.
Okay, but I was just curious, like, do we have a rough, I mean, we're telling people that they have till the eighth?
Yeah.
So are we literally thinking?
I didn't even wanna go into why on May sixteenth, we said two weeks, and now we're going to July eighth, but.
Well, I don't know, it's just what's posted, it's what's, it's what Casey posted, so.
Today, we said on the sixteenth, that we were gonna post a few weeks.
But we missed one of the deadlines to post.
We didn't, I didn't miss nothing.
Our office did.
So, um. So just saying that if we don't decide what the timeline is tonight, then we're deciding the end of July. And then if we're deciding what the timeline is the end of July, then we're talking about August for actual reviewing, I don't wanna review anything. I don't wanna review any bids unless we have a policy.
Why not?
Because the whole point of having a policy is to.
Sounds like we've got work to do.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're planning on.